Evening, everybody. Before I call the meeting to order, I just want to let you know that there's a couple council members missing from tonight's meeting, and we have three council members here, so that is a quorum. So with that, I call the November 21st meeting 2023 order. If you could, please silence all of your electronic devices. If you could stand for the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. Dear God, we come tonight to bow our heads and open this meeting in prayer. On this week of Thanksgiving, we are thankful for many things. We are thankful for this amazing city of Temple Terrace. We are thankful for all the fantastic city staff. We are thankful for all of our citizens. We are thankful for the opportunities you give this city council to serve others. We are very thankful to anyone that is trying to improve other people's lives, and especially thankful to those working towards peace and the end of violence. We pray for all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and tonight's historic fact is done by Councilmember Fernandez.
Okay. So I'd like to talk a little bit about how Temple Terrace was settled and why we have so many different styles of houses in the city. So we're very fortunate to not be a cookie cutter community. We have many different styles and sizes of houses, something to suit everybody's need. But the city has primarily been built in distinct time periods. So Bertha Palmer established River Hills around 1910 to 1914, and that was a hunting preserve, and it wasn't really a residential community like what we see now with the suburban community. But in 1920, Temple Terrace began to develop into a residential community with homes constructed in the Mediterranean Revival style, built around a golf course as part of the first master planned golf course community in the United States. But during the Great Depression, sales were very slow and very little development occurred. But after World War II, as servicemen came home and needed places to stay and started having families, there was a very large housing boom, and Temple Terrace was part of that housing boom. The demand created a large set time of building for mid-century modern houses in the 1950s and the 1960s. In fact, the growth, the population increased so dramatically at that time that Temple Terrace Elementary was over capacity after three years in use, and River Hills Elementary had to be built to absorb some of the children. So then, so that was our second large housing build. And then in the 1980s, that was our third housing boom in Temple Terrace. And that's where you see a lot of our subdivisions were built, Francis Arbor, Teresa Arbor, areas around the country, around the family recreation center. And the best I can do to describe that style is it's very typical suburban style with a lot of natural finishes. You'll notice that there's a lot of stone exteriors and cedar, but it's also a very distinct architectural style. And throughout the time period, because we are not a developer planned full community, you will see people filled in lots with different style homes. So you could be next to a Mediterranean Revival house with a mid-century modern house or maybe a 1980s style house. We're all scattered. But if you're interested in seeing some examples of homes in Temple Terrace, besides the one you live in, the Temple Terrace Women's Club is hosting a tour of homes, and that's going to be December 3rd, beginning at 12:00 PM, I'm sorry, well, noon. And it's going to take you to several houses in Temple Terrace that are all decorated for the holidays. That's December 3rd. It's during the daytime. And right now, I think they have between four and five houses on the tour, and you'll find out specifically which houses when you get to the beginning of the tour. But if you can, if you're interested and you would like to attend, you can scan this QR code. I don't know if you can get close enough, but we're going to have this on our Facebook page and other things. The city of Temple Terrace is a sponsor, but you can scan the QR code and get more information and get your tickets. But I encourage all of you to take part in this, to see inside some of the houses that were built during our distinct housing development time periods, and that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Recognizations and proclamations, there are none. Presentations, we have a presentation from the Southwest Florida Water Management District, Amber Smith, who is the Senior Government Affairs Regional Manager. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon or good evening at this point. Amber Smith, I am with the Southwest Florida Water Management District, also known as SWFMD. And I just want to give you a couple of points tonight about the water shortage order that went into effect today. So the counties in our district are under this order. However, the areas of Hillsborough, Pinellas, Pasco, as well as the cities in that area are under a modified shortage, which, starting December 1st, will actually restrict irrigation for lawns to one day a week. And I understand from the folks in your city, in your administration, your utilities department, that they have also already put this on the website with some examples of when the watering day is and those kinds of things, but happy to answer any questions you have tonight as well.
Any questions? No, thank you. Thank you for the work you guys do. Okay, board appointments. We have one appointment for the school support committee. There's one vacancy. The city received two applications, one from Mike Segrist and one from Casey Kendall. Mr. Segrist is currently on the school support committee, and he served for the last three years, and he is eligible to be reappointed. Ms. Kendall has been a city resident for one and a half years and wants to become more involved with our community. I don't see them in the audience. So with that, we need to vote. You have ballots, so please vote for one and pass them down. Thank you. All right, I need a motion to approve Mike Segrist to the school support committee.
To appoint Mike Segrist to the new term of the school support committee.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Thank you both for applying. All right, consideration of minutes from the previous meeting. If everyone's had a chance to look at them, I can entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I've moved to approve the minutes from the November 7, 2003 meeting.
Yeah, you guys will be doing the work tonight. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Okay, persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. Request to address the vice mayor and the councillor in the back of the council chambers. Please complete the form and pass them to the city clerk. Council agrees to a 30-minute time limit for all public comment to be continued at the end of the meeting if there's more time needed. A three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. If you come to the podium, please state your name for the record and your city of residence. I don't have any forms up here now. Does anyone from the public want to speak? Okay, thank you. Seeing none. Communications and petitions, none. Consent agenda.
To approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. All right, public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. The first one is a resolution awarding the China Berry Booster Pump Station rehabilitation to CEC Motor and Utility Services LLC. Utilities Director Troy Tinch.
Good evening, Your Honorable Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm here to seek approval for funding to rehabilitate the China Berry Booster Pump Station. So a little bit about our system, the potable water system. As you know, we have two water treatment plants within the city. Those two plants pump out into the system and two, likely one of the two of our booster pump stations. We have one in the northeast part of the city and one in the southeast part of the city. The one in the northeast then stores that water through the pressure of the system, pumps out into the outlined areas during high need hours, usually first thing in the morning or early evening hours. This station itself is the China Berry Station is located, if you could pull up the aerial, in the, thank you, in the Temple Park area of Temple Terrace, right there in the unincorporated area, section of the city. And a little bit of history about this station itself. It was originally built back in the early 60s as part of the Temple Park subdivision. It was actually built as what they called a treatment plant. I suspect it was probably nothing more than a pump, a well, and maybe a holding tank. I doubt they did much treatment at that point. But once it came online, it was likely turned over to the city, I'm sorry, to Hillsborough County. Moved forward to 1979. The city's expanding. We're expanding our utility service area. We were approached by the county to take this system over. We do so. Five years later, we put together a CIP project, and that project basically built the current facility that you see on site. The system consisted of a pump station, half a million gallon served tank, storage tank, and that system really from the mid 80s till today has not seen a lot of improvements. Basic needs when it comes to maintenance, and that's about it. So we've got about four years of service life out of that system, and so it's well beyond that design life. So what we were looking to do is we put together a design package, Kimley Horn redesigned the entire system for a rehab. The rehab will consist of new pumps. We're increasing the pump sizes from 50 horsepower to 75 horsepower, so that's going to allow us to have more availability of water. Again, try and think in terms of quantity and not pressure, and the pressure itself won't change. It just, you'll have the availability to get more water out into the system quicker. So as that part of the city expands, which we kind of anticipate, we've designed the system to keep up with that demand. In addition, we'll put in new variable flow devices. These devices allow the motors to ramp up and down slowly. It gives you a lot more lifespan on your motors. These motors can be quite expensive, so that's something that we were looking to do. And in addition, it won't necessarily always ramp up to the highest speed. It may run at a lower rate, saves electricity, saves again the lifespan of the motor. These will go into a controlled building, are going to build a new small control building with all the electrical components. It will be climate controlled because they do create quite a bit of heat. So in addition, the existing pump station will get a bit of a facelift. We're going to repaint. We're going to put in new louvers, and we're going to put a new roof on it. In addition, the water tank itself will be repainted, so kind of refresh that area. And finally, we'll be putting in a new generator, new gen set. That gen set will be not inside the building as it currently is configured. It will be just outside of the building. It will be in a self-contained structure. Both the generator and the new climate control building will be wind rated, so in event we do have a hurricane, those facilities are rated for that, those types of events. So when we originally looked at cost for this project, this is back in '22, we were budgeting for '23, so we sat down with the engineers and they gave us an opinion of probable costs at OPC, and that was about $800,000. So since then, there's been quite a bit of movement in the construction market. I think we're all aware that there still continues to be shortages, and the supply and demand curve tells you that when demand is high and supply is low, costs go up. So what we saw was a pretty significant increase. We actually talked to the engineering firm right before we released this project in September of this year for bid, and they figured it would come in somewhere around 1.5. The bids all came in, we had three in total. The bid range was from 1.7 billion to 2.3, so a little bit higher than we had anticipated. So we sat down with the folks in finance and said, okay, we need to bridge a gap here. We're about $900,000 short of what we budgeted for. Because this project is improving on the system, the funds that are put aside for water impact fees would be something we could utilize for this effort. So we're going to dip into that fund. There's currently about $3.2 million in that fund, so we're going to take about $910,000 out to bridge that gap between what we had budgeted and what we're actually going to need for construction. So that said, staff recommends city council adopt the resolution authorizing the expenditure of $1,709,620 to CEC Motor and Utility Services LLC for the rehabilitation of the China Berry Boost Pump Station. I'll stand for questions if any.
Okay, before that, are any comments from the public? Seeing none. Council, any questions?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, my first question is looking at the price range, and I know the selection has been for the bid that was the lowest of the three bids.
Yes.
But are there any pieces that the lower bid has not, that has left out that the more expensive bids did? And the reason I'm asking is, I'm just concerned, even though we may accept the lower bid, if there are a lot of change orders or things that are ordinary and expected parts of this project that maybe weren't in the bid to make the price of more, even though it's very high, more palatable?
Sure.
And then we end up with a lot with change orders for ordinary work, not for extraordinary changes that we might make.
Right.
We end up spending more. So when you looked at the bids, was that part of your consideration?
Yes, it was. So part of the bid process is we initially literally open the bids, we read the bids as they stand. We then verify the bid. So that verification process, we literally go down through the line items and ensure that every item that we require for this project is listed and there's a dollar amount associated. So there's no, like you said, there's no surprises. And if we find that one bid doesn't have a line item covered, like say they left out the generator or some piping or whatever the material may be, we consider that to be a non-complete bid, and we throw that bid out.
What about if the material listed is maybe not enough for the project? So the example I have is years past doing a street project, and one of the bids didn't have a sufficient number of traffic cones or something, you know, something that you needed, so maybe they were there but not in a sufficient number. So then they were the lower bid, accept that bid, and then you have that add-on cost because even though it might have been listed in the bid, it wasn't listed at a high enough volume or item count to be functional.
So when we put that bid estimate together, the specification package lists very specifically what we want. So there's no, like you buy aluminum pipe versus a metal. There's none of that kind of stuff going on. So you get kind for kind, you get apple for apple. In addition, the items are listed of quantity. We need X number of linear feet. So they bid on that X number of linear feet of pipe or whatever material is required for the project, and they give us a bid price. If they've underestimated that, that's on the contractor. If for some reason we have underestimated that as a city, that is something they could talk to us about to do a change order. But other than that, there's really no option for change orders that would be allotted for this type of work.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. We knew that we were going to hit this kind of a wall, given ARPA and construction and everything else. 110% increase? More than double?
Mm-hmm.
Well, there were several questions along with that, and you may not be able to answer this, it may have to go to James. What is the use of the water fund that, where the extra money is going to come from?
So the water impact fees are specifically used for expansions to the system. So because we are improving the capacity of this for future expansion, it qualifies for those dollars.
Okay.
Can I answer that?
Have we talked to Jeff about that?
No, I don't think we specifically talked to Jeff.
You've got a, come on, I'm sorry, come on.
I don't mean to, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but it's, I don't want to get ourselves at the end of the year that we have an issue with, we couldn't have done what we did.
No, I didn't think that it was a concern enough to ask our auditor.
Okay, that's why, just, you know, we start getting into legal issues as to what the funds are designed to be used for. What is, what is the future expansion? I guess, I guess my question is the southeast, is the southeast pump system strictly for that geographical area?
Yes.
So if we expand through annexation, there's not much residential that's going to go down there, it's going to be more commercial than anything else.
I think you're going to see some commercial, but there's still a fair amount of open land down in there. If you think about that area down around MMV, the area over by the booster station for TECO.
Right.
There's a lot of vacant land still, and I think you could see, we're always starting to see some housing projects come into that area.
But do we need to, do we need to set a motion expansion of the service area? I mean, I'm not sure what that would require.
At this point, I would not recommend expanding the service area.
At least, at least looking into it.
We could certainly look into that, but keep in mind, the service area expands well beyond the city limits.
Right, I understand.
To the east, it goes beyond the bypass canal.
Right.
Almost to 301.
Right.
So it's pretty expansive out in that region. Again, there's a lot of opportunities for growth out there. I think you're starting to see more growth within that area, and I don't foresee that slowing down, for sure.
The other question then is just how desperate are we to get this done at this point?
You know, we talked a lot about that because of the cost, but try and keep in mind that we really thought the realistic number would be more like 1.4, 1.5. So when it came in at 1.7, it was about 10, 12% above what we really had anticipated. Even though we had budgeted a much lower dollar amount, we realized that that was such an old number that was utilized to create that 23 budget line item. We knew that we were going to be over it anyway. So we talked about it, we talked with Jim about it in great detail. This money's been sitting for a little bit of time, but it's seen some recent large flows into that fund from, say, the housing developments in the area, Amazon, things of that nature. So we have those funds available, and we really felt like we're going to see this expansion sooner rather than later. The system is old, it's approaching 40 years. It really needs to be rehabbed.
I know the pricing gets sticky. I mean, it's going to go up, but it's going to come back down.
Yes.
A little bit. We just don't know when.
That's the problem.
And how far down. It's not going to go back to what it was before, we know that.
Right.
The pricing will let that happen.
Exactly.
I just, I just have a tough time with, you know, 110% increase.
Yeah, I mean, it was certainly a little bit of a shock for us as well, but again, talking to the folks in the industry, some of our more recent bids that have come through for lift station rehab projects, those have been coming in 30 to 40% above the OPC. The problem is the market's just kind of exploded for building. You know, again, you had that kind of perfect storm with COVID and the shortages. you had that kind of perfect storm with COVID and the shortages of materials, and then the boom associated with, you know, the ARPA projects, all this federal funding. So people are pulling in these materials as soon as they can get it. And again, it's a lot, supply and demand. When demand is high and supply is low, the cost of goods goes up. So that's kind of all, kind of converted to this unfortunate storm that we're in right now with construction. And we really hesitate to push it out too much farther because we may push it out a year and maybe we'll save a couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe not. Maybe we won't. Maybe it will be more expensive. Or maybe we'll need, find that that station now is desperately in need of a rehab, and we have to go a different route that drives the cost up.
Understood. Okay. Have, have the residents been contacted in the areas to what we're going to, and how long is this going to take?
The construction period, the actual construction timeframe, probably a couple of months. We're going to have a good amount of lead time before we actually begin turning dirt. The generator itself will likely take 12 to 14 months, maybe longer. So we have some time to get out and talk to the public about what we're doing. There really won't be any change to the system. People aren't going to see some kind of difference while we're working on the project. Again, think of it in quantity versus pressure. It's just the availability of water will be greater. The pressure will stay the same.
Okay. All right. I really don't like doubling contracts like that.
Trust me, we didn't care for it either, but.
No, I know you didn't.
We, again, we knew going into this bid that we were going to be upside down with the budgeted amount. We knew, again, it was going to be closer to that 1.4, 1.5.
Who's going to manage the project?
It will be managed likely through the engineering department. So, I'm sorry.
Can we handle it?
Yes.
Is there anything else going on?
That's why we have the consultants on board to help with the ARPA projects, so that we can focus on these CIP projects. So it would be a combination. Actually, this will be run through the water department. So Nate will be likely overseeing this effort.
What other projects do we have hanging out there for them?
We have a handful of lift station projects that we're looking to bring forward this fiscal year. Another water line replacement project that we're looking to implement this this year as well. So probably all said and done, maybe four to five total. So we have staff that can handle that workload. You know, the engineering department's staffed up now. I don't know if you know, but we have a junior level engineer, an EI, we have GIS, and we have an inspector on staff now. So it seems to be running quite efficiently.
I just don't want us to get bogged down.
Oh, absolutely.
Not be able to get these things done.
Yeah, I mean, I think the true goal is ARPA right now because it has defined timeframes, and we're doing what we need to do to ensure that happens. These projects, if they need to slip for whatever reason, it's something we'll have to evaluate.
If this has to slip, do we get a rebid?
After 30 days, yes. Or 60 days, I'm sorry. The bid's good for a defined time period. Once that time period lapses, you have to rebid it.
Because hopefully interest rates will start coming down here soon anyway. Okay. All right, thanks. Thank you, Troy.
Sure.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Okay. If acceptable, I need a motion awarding the China Berry Booster Pump Station rehabilitation to CEC Motor and Utility Services LLC in the amount of 1,709,620. Is there a motion?
Move to approve resolution awarding China Berry Booster Pump Station rehabilitation to CEC Motor and Utility Services LLC.
Is there a second?
Do I have to say the amount?
Uh, go ahead.
In the amount of 1,709,620.
Is there a second? Then second.
Second.
Second. Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Now we're into discussion. Seeing no discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Okay, next is a resolution approving the final adjustments to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. Finance Director Jim Ingram will explain.
Good evening, counsel. At the conclusion of the fiscal year 2022, 2023, there were several expenditures and revenues not included in the adopted or mid-year amended budget. Section 166 to 41,8, Florida statutes allows the governing body of each municipality to amend a budget within 60 days following the end of the fiscal year to account for such expenditures with matching unbudgeted revenues. Each exhibit that was attached contains the general ledger account numbers and amounts that require a budget adjustment. I know that, that was quite lengthy. So I have a summary here. Exhibit one is for adjustments to the general fund budget as summarized below. Hurricane Idalia expenditures and matching FEMA revenues, 273,768. Hurricane Ian expenditures and matching FEMA revenues, 84,535. And I'll just make a note on each of these, the Ian, Hurricane Ian expenditures were incurred in October of 2022. So it was in this fiscal year, if you remember that hurricane, that storm hit us right at the end of fiscal year 22. Fourth of July parade expenditures and matching sponsor and donation revenues, 18,270. HR wellness event and matching United Healthcare Wellness revenue is $20,000. Boys and Girls Club support expenditures and matching community enhancement revenues from the Police Forfeiture Restricted Funds, $10,000. The JAG Grant expenditures and matching JAG Grant revenue, 5,200. Additional contribution to the Fleet Fund and matching interest revenue, $40,000. Friends of the Library expenditures and matching donation revenue was $14,721. Exhibit two is for the adjustments to the Community Investment Fund as summarized below. Police, IT, library, and parks and recreation operating and capital expenditures exceeding the original budget and matching excess overbudget CIT revenues otherwise added to reserves were $136,284. And I note here that we had a total of 412,242 of CIT revenue that was not budgeted. We got in about $2 million. We budgeted 1.6. So the balance of 275,958 will go into the CIT reserves. Exhibit three is for adjustments to the Water and Sewer Utility Funds as summarized. Hurricane Idalia expenditures and matching FEMA revenues, 49,524. Hurricane Ian expenditures and matching FEMA revenues, 19,095. Exhibit four is for the adjustments to the Sanitation Fund. Hurricane Adalia expenditures and matching FEMA revenues, 11,840. Hurricane Ian expenditures and matching FEMA revenues, 73,270. I'll just make a note that because of all the cleanup, post-cleanup work on Ian, that's why that is higher. Exhibit five is for adjustments to the Fleet Fund as summarized below. Hurricane Idalia expenditures and matching FEMA revenues were 7,213. And Hurricane Ian expenditures and matching FEMA revenues are $948. Staff recommends that council adopt a resolution approving the final adjustments to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. And I stand for questions.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Before that, are any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. Counsel members, any questions?
I don't have a question or a comment.
Well, that'll be under discussion. Okay.
What's the total FEMA receivable that we're going to be recording for both Ian and Idalia? Was it Idalia?
Ooh. I don't have the total right here. I'd have to add it up.
Okay, just curious. All right.
But it's a.
Pretty good number.
It's, it's a pretty good number, but it's under 1 million.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. If acceptable, I need a motion approving the final adjustment to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget.
Move to approve the final adjustment, a budget adjustment for the 2022, 2023 revenue cycle.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Now discussion?
So my comment is, is really just for the public to simplify all that information that you gave us, that the net impact is actually zero. Because that's, we spent the funds that have been received from, from various revenue sources that were not anticipated when we created the budget in, for the just past fiscal year. So this is just so that basically we are reporting what was not anticipated, and the expenses that were not anticipated that we are adjusting the budget for are covered by the revenues that we were not anticipated that we are adjusting the budget for. So the actual net impact to our budget is zero.
That is correct.
Okay, very good. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Thank you.
Again, I'm glad we had a quorum tonight to get that done.
Yes. Okay, next, I want to open the public hearing on the second reading of ordinance 1556, amending chapter two of the Code of Ordinances, firefighter pension and retirement. Fire Chief Ian Kemp will explain.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, City Manager Ian Kemp, your fire chief. I'm here presenting the second reading and public hearing, amending the ordinance of chapter two ordinance of the Code of Ordinances, firefighter pension and retirement. The firefighter pension ordinance pertaining to the drop plan was amended January 2020 after two notice public hearings. It has been recently discovered that upon codification, a sentence in subsection C1A that has been proposed at the time of the amendment may have been inadvertently omitted. The mission is substantive such that it cannot be deemed as a mere Scrivener's error. The purpose, the proposed amendment has been included in the back-up material to the agenda at the first reading in January 2020, but is explicitly omitted from the proposed amendment that was adopted upon the second reading. The city council is once again being presented with the omitted term, and will need to consider amending section 2-205 to include it. Staff recommends, and the pension board recommends as well, that the city council approve the ordinance on the second reading, extending the deferred retirement option program from five years to eight years. And 60 months will be compounded quarterly at a rate of 6.5%. Anything beyond the 60 months will be compounded quarterly at a rate of 3%.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none. Counsel, any questions?
Just as, just as a point of clarification, you may, so it's on the record that the calculations had been performed according to the intended ordinance. Not, in other words, we don't have to come back and fix anything in order to make the, make the fund hold.
You are correct, sir.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I just had a comment.
Okay. A little bit later on. All right, I'm closing the public hearing and asking the city clerk to read the ordinance, please.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Temple Terrace, Chapter Two, Administration and Elections, Article Three, Offices and Employees, Division Three, Pensions and Retirement, Subdivision Four, Firefighters, Section 2-205, deferment, retirement option program drop, subsequent, subsection C, Funding, subsection one, establishment of drop account, providing for severability and for codification, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with, and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you. If the ordinance is acceptable, I need a motion to adopt ordinance 1556, amending chapter two of the Code of Ordinances, firefighter pension and retirement.
Move to approve on second reading ordinance 1556, amending chapter two of the Code of Ordinances, firefighter pension and retirement.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Discussion?
Well, I just, I just want to confirm for people who might not have caught the first reading, and that is that the sentence that we're discussing and that we're, that we're discussing right now was originally in all of the documents that council evaluated and council believed were part of the approved statute or ordinance, chapter two, part of that original language of the ordinance. So this vote that we're doing right now is basically to uphold the original intent of the discussion.
I think you're partially true. The first reading of the ordinance was read exactly like this one was. The second reading back in 2020, for whatever reason, omitted the 3%, and so it would remain 6.5%. So for whatever reason, that language got in there. We're really not sure why. We've had a lot of discussions with the pension attorney, the city attorney. So, and it was found when someone was getting, going into the drop and they were reading the ordinance, and it didn't match up with what we had been told. It would have probably been in his advantage of maybe not saying anything because he would have gotten a higher interest rate, or probably not, but we would have come back and fixed it. So we felt the best thing to do, driven by the two attorneys, was to come back with you and make sure that everybody agrees and that this is what the intent of the language was. So, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Great. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, no more discussion. Need a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Next, open the public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1557, amending chapter two of the Code of Ordinances by revising section 2-61 entitled, Travel Expenses for City Officers, Employees, and Authorized Persons. Finance Director Jim Ingram, welcome back.
Thank you. The city recognizes that out-of-town travel and related business expenses can be an integral and necessary component of the operation of local government. Florida statutes 112061 sets forth the per diem and travel expenses for public officers, employees, and authorized persons applicable to travel paid for by a public agency. Florida statutes 166.021 allows a governing body to establish equitable standards and to provide consistent treatment for those who incur such expenses, as well as establishing and maintaining effective controls over those expenses. The city council initially set forth the per diem and travel expense policy for the city through ordinance 516 on July 10, 1984, and subsequently amended the policy to increase the per diem and mileage reimbursement through ordinance 891 on January 3, 1995. And again, through ordinance 1192 on November 21, 200 through ordinance 1192 on November 21, 2006. After a thorough review of Chapter Two, Section 261 of the code, an update to the city's per diem and travel expense policy is again warranted, and staff is recommending that city council adopt the attached ordinance on second reading. And I'll add that couple things. One, the mileage reimbursement is, we go strictly by the IRS rate that is updated at the beginning of each year. Sometimes, depending on price fluctuations, they may do an adjustment July 1. The rest, we are basing everything from the United States General Services, United States General Services Administration per diem rates based on this area, the Tampa Bay area. And so that, unlike previous ordinances where there was a fixed dollar amount, we can continue to use, this ordinance allows us to use these rates as updated each January 1. So I will stand for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any comments from the public? Seeing none. City Council, any questions? No questions? Okay. Closing the public hearing and asking the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter Two of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, Administration and Elections, Article Three, Offices and Employees, by revising Section 2-61 entitled Travel Expenses for City Officers, Employees, and Authorized Persons, Providing for Authority to Codify, Providing for Repeal of Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you, city clerk. Okay, if the ordinance is acceptable, I need a motion to adopt ordinance 1557, amending Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances by revising Section 2-61 entitled Travel Expenses for City Employees, City Officers, Employees, and Authorized Persons.
I move to approve ordinance 1557 on second reading, amending Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances by revising Section 2-61 entitled Travel Expenses for City Officers, Employees, and Authorized Persons.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a comment. I think that this is a long time overdue, and I appreciate everybody, all the departments that worked on this, but it's, it's indicative of the administration that we have now and the staff and the directors that are looking inside our codes, our ordinances and so forth, fixing what needs to be fixed. It allows us to be more agile and be able to take care of our employees. It was probably somewhat honorous, or onerous on them to do the travel. It's probably costing them money in the long run. So I would say thank you to everybody who was involved with this. These are the kinds of things that we need to, as we find it, we fix it, and that's good. So I thank you very much for getting this done.
Thank you. City manager made sure we reviewed all the ordinances, so a lot of credit goes to his leadership.
But you guys do, you guys got to do the legwork, too, so.
That's true. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any council carryover business? Seeing none? New business and board reports?
Got nothing.
None. City managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. So in your backup this evening, you have what will be the first of a regular series of quarterly reports on our projects. I know this has been a point of discussion, as Councilmember Schizler alluded to earlier. We want to make sure that we hit those timelines. Those are important projects. So Mr. Tinch and his staff will be putting those together for you, so you can see clearly where we are. If you have any questions about those, you can obviously ask them today. You could ask them at any point. But again, we want to make sure that you and the public, and the public, to Councilmember Fernandez, you had asked me last time, that the public had access.
Yes.
They do have access to this, to these reports as well. Any questions? Wanted to also take an opportunity to introduce the newest member of our executive department. Joel Duarte is our new marketing and communications officer. So Joel's up at the podium here. Just ask to say a few words.
Thank you, Carlos. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. First and foremost, I'd like to express we're honored to work for the great city of Temple Terrace. I look forward to elevating Temple Terrace brand while maintaining its core values. I'm confident together we'll achieve great things. I'd like to take this opportunity to share with you the promotional video for our Winter Wonderland, which is coming up on December 2nd. So if you can take a look at this.
Yeah, well, how's this going to be promoted, this, then yet? How's that going to go out?
Yeah, so after this, we'll post it on our YouTube pages, our social media pages, and do paid ads on social media so that they can go out to this region, as well as push it out on press release, so that the press can get it as well. The flyer already went out to you on social media. I don't know if you guys were able to see it, but we did put out the flyer already. And the video, we wanted you guys to check out for us before we push it out.
Who created it?
I did creative direction, and then Brian...
I see a hand wave back there.
Brian did the magic.
Excellent. Great job.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. I could just add, too. So I'm very confident in the team. So Brian's outstanding, and Nathan and Joel, I think they're doing great things. In addition to what he just said, we've also pushed this out to visit Tampa Bay, because that is a big regional powerhouse in terms of getting the word out. So much to the chagrin of Mr. Langfeld, who's, I'm surprised I can actually see him. I thought he'd be shrinking in his chair, thinking about all the people that are going to show up now. But it should be an outstanding event. And speaking of that, let me ask Mr. Langfeld to come up and talk a little bit more about that and where we are and some other things.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Chambers, member of city council. In addition to some of the items that Mr. Duarte just mentioned about information going out about this upcoming event, there was a great article in the Beacon that came out earlier this week regarding the event, so publicity is certainly getting out there. But I just want to kind of touch on some of the highlights of the Winter Wonderland event for those who may be listening. The event is this Saturday, December 2, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. at Woodmont Park and on the first fairway of the golf course. As in years past, the event will feature a snowslide and snow pile for children to play in, bounce houses. New for this year are holiday train rides. We will have a rock climbing wall. Arts and crafts projects will be brought to the public by the University Presbyterian Church. The caroling tradition will continue with support from Mission Hill Church. The annual tree lighting, which all of you have graciously accepted the invitation to, will occur at 7:00 p.m. at Woodmont Park. Visitations with Santa for everybody who's been nice this year will start at 7:05. The drone show, the highlight of this year's event, will kick off at approximately 8:30 p.m. Due to some of the anticipated increases in attendance, there will be some modifications to traffic around the first fairway. Woodmont Avenue will be closed, as it normally is, between the entrance to the Woodmont Clubhouse and Greenfield, Green, Greenfield, Green, what's the name of that road, Green Way?
You said it, we know it.
Yes.
And Belt Air will also be closed between the college dorms and Ridgedale. So that will just allow for the safety of the public who is in the area that night. Also on that night is the annual golf cart parade. This parade runs from the Family Recreation Complex to the Winter Wonderland site. The parade starts at 6:00 p.m. Staging for the event will start at 5:00 p.m. It is $10 to register for the golf cart parade, but that $10 registration that gets you into the parade also gets you your golf cart registration sticker for the year. So it's kind of a two-for-one if you join the parade. This year, new, we will have prizes for the top three decorated golf carts in the parade. So please get your golf cart signed up, get them decorated, and come join the parade. It is a great time every year for those who participate and those along the parade route who watch it. One last housekeeping note regarding the Thanksgiving holidays and leisure services facilities, the library and the Lightfoot Center will be closed on Thursday and Friday. We will resume normal operations on Saturday. The family complex will be closed on Thursday, but will be open holiday hours from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Friday, and then back to normal operations Saturday and Sunday. If anybody has any questions regarding Winter Wonderland or the golf cart parade?
Yes. Just wanted to clarify one thing that Mr., I know Mr. Langfeld's super excited about Winter Wonderland. He actually said it's this Saturday. I just don't want people showing up this Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry. December 2nd.
December 2nd, which is still a week from Saturday, so.
Looking forward to it so much.
You are.
Hold on a second. Mr. Bay, hold on.
Will it be visible from the third fairway, like the fireworks are?
The drone show? Yes, it is visible. However, the drone show, unlike fireworks, is directional.
Okay.
So unless you're looking at it from the intended viewing area, you're not going to get the full effect of what the shapes in the sky are made.
Okay. Because I've had some people ask, oh, we'll just go to the third fairway, so let's find out. Okay.
You can see it, but you won't get the full effect.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And the last thing is just to pick up on what Mr. Langfeld talked about in terms of our operating hours for the next several days for the holiday. Wanted to remind the public that there will be no trash pickup on Thanksgiving Day, but we will resume regular operations on Friday. And City Hall, the Public Works Building, will also be closed on Thursday and Friday.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's your report?
Thank you, sir.
City Attorney's Report, Ms. Shoshon.
I have nothing for this evening.
I have one thing that's in line with the city attorney regarding the sunshine law and council member responses on social media. And it's not, I don't want, I just want to make sure people know, because a lot of times there are posts on Facebook or like Temple, the Temple Terrace Bulletin or something like that, that concern city issues, but as city council people, we cannot respond to those posts. So I just, can you just clarify for people, just so that they don't think we're ignoring them, that they need to, we just can't respond to those posts?
The reason why it is not recommended that you respond to those posts is because if all of the council members were responding to these posts, it would turn into a discussion that is not happening in this public forum here in council chambers. And so since you all are not to discuss city business outside of a noticed city meeting, it is recommended that you not be posting responses to things on social media.
I would, I would like to comment on that, because I see those posts. A lot of them on Temple Terrace Bulletin Board, things like that, and they are city-related, and I don't respond, but sometimes I do let staff know.
Yes.
So they can respond. And now that we have new head of PIO or Communications, maybe we can watch those websites a lot closer and get comments back. Again, for the public out there, please, instead of putting it on Facebook, why don't you just get ahold of the city? You know, that's, that's a good policy.
Yes. That's, I just wanted, there were a number of things on there.
Anything else? Anything else? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, staff and directors and all your people. Enjoy the weekend, and thank you very much for all that you do for the city.
Okay. Yeah, same here. Happy Thanksgiving. With that said, meetings adjourned.
You travel safe.
Okay, so I talked to Brian.